All right. Dallas got something she wants to do, so we're going down to, we're seeing business.
Okay. Um, last week I had mentioned that I was about to talk to the school superintendent about the 246 school bar. Um, I want to say that she actually, she called our office last week. She came in the courthouse, several of us sat together, had a really good discussion, and I really appreciate that very much. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. You said it's a newspaper you guys get, even newspaper people get that? Yes, it helped.
Yes, it did, yeah.
It was very important.
All right, thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Any public discussion on the item on this agenda? Minutes, please. You got this wrong. They, they, they didn't move, they just.
We're all running me in here.
I thought about putting that.
It was all done with the lead.
You all never discussed it beforehand? You just both grandminds.
I made, I made the motion that we reroute, oh, be back in.
I knew, I knew neither liked that deal.
They wanted the right guy in.
Yeah.
Experience is always the best.
Can't buy experience, you can't.
That's right.
There's only one way to get experience.
Yeah.
Your depression, I'm the sophomore, he's the graduate. That's it. That's it.
I went to McRae University, um, school hard.
Hey, it was a good university.
It was one.
Learn lots there.
That's right. Literally, nobody else there.
You were the top of your class.
I was the top of my class. And the bottom, and the middle.
The cousin that graduated with three, he says he was in the top three.
Right? It was three or eight, or?
Eight.
What's going on with Allen and Cleo, what are they gonna do?
They're gonna be all right. They, you better look out. But they, with them windy, you mean, out there, they're gonna have more money than.
Well, true, but.
And they're, they're gonna keep surviving on it, on the tail end.
Don't think about it that way, huh?
I don't know what I've been thinking.
What? I don't hear no more, I want to go in this way.
Is that little meeting I heard?
With that one over there, I don't know either. But I think they're farther north than I thought they was gonna be. I don't know what two people in your office are doing about Carmel.
They left Wednesday of last week and told us thank you for all the help, and they hope their buses send them back to Alphatah County and see you later, so.
But they were just around the town of Carmel though, weren't they? The town of Carmel, let's, oh, can't figure that out. I make the motion to approve?
Take it.
Home favorite?
All right.
Stan, I missed one, and you missed one, so right here on top.
Stanley, your depression, nobody.
That's right. I dropped my pin right here.
I tried to give, I tried to give Toby them, but they were the top two.
Oh, you're waiting.
Hey, come to the meeting.
You're gonna spend too much money.
It's right there.
Wait on the next one, I'll imagine I'll ever.
Is there a, is there a feast or famine?
I need to sign, yeah, I'm meditating.
Yes, sir.
Go sign both places.
Both, sorry.
You couldn't miss a rail easily.
Takes twice as long.
Yes, it does. We used to do it that way. Believe me, it takes a while. He's drumming Tuesday night.
Yeah, he's a drumming Tuesday, and he's away on DCLA, on Friday at DCLA.
Yes.
So I went, oh darn.
And seven eighth grade.
I may not miss you next, this, all this week.
Seven eighth grade played before high school in that gym over there, nowhere to film, 'cause that little bitty.
Yeah.
Four A.
DCLA.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
You got to film right in the middle of our crowd, you got seven eighth grade in high school, crowd's full.
Yeah, if you're frankly you are, you'll be able to handle it.
Yeah. Now I think we got Allen and Cleo the next week, next Tuesday in Holland, we start the Cherokee strip, right?
Right. Well, we got one next week. Next two weeks, the week from Holland, another three or.
He'd maybe be a good camera before the tournament.
Good for me.
Cherokee plays out of Lake Island next Tuesday.
Still fine.
Whoever's scheduled, then we'll make it.
They get about four of them today, huh?
Yeah, have one over here tomorrow.
Uh, they might get all right there.
Yeah, well, they're gonna be all right on their money, they're gonna do better. Basketball, who they gonna play?
Yeah, that's a good, good question.
I mean, if you can't play freedom and Billings.
Then don't.
I guess can.
They'd have to go out there.
Both sides, whatever.
Shires pretty much over.
They gave out the fan man.
Wow. Why would you crap us? We're close. We're the eight boys, I had five, and two showed up after Christmas. Now, it's getting weird.
It doesn't make any sense, 'cause by the time you hit playoffs, you're gonna.
Play the bigger schools anyway.
We're gonna be.
Playoff, you might get in for a board. Lots of politics going on right now.
Ever done politics with you?
Not me, not us. It's a different situation when the top eight boys and girls are all gonna be the cost of this year. Different funders, men in ten years.
Gets you a lot of practice signing your name.
Gets where you can't sign it.
That's when you're out of money, you know, that's what.
That's right.
Or you'll figure out, do a shortcut on your signature.
Yeah.
Willis tracks me up sometimes, he'll just initial it W.C., and sometimes he'll put W.C., and sometimes he'll put Willis C.
Yeah, yeah.
All of the one means.
I saw that. W.C. and everything else, yeah.
He says he's just still to see if I pay attention. I do, I do.
So I'm gonna insert that here in a minute, Jake.
No, he gets tired, or he gets to talk in the mid-name writing.
How'd you like?
No, Willis.
We get good conversations going.
It's a good place to have one of them real long names, isn't it?
Four figures?
Campaigning, I called up to see what he was doing, and he was taking a nap. I'll tell you, do not wake him up, don't wake him, he's gonna be disappointed. I went, it's okay, don't even tell him I called. It wasn't fifteen minutes later in my phone room, are you still? And so I was picked up, and we had, well, I don't know how much campaigning we got done, but we got lots of talking done.
Just asking if you raised me.
We had conversations, he, he was with me with the, with the, um, with the, on the cobblestone road.
I remember he was working on a project in my backyard when I was about three years old. I walked up, I said, what's your name? And I think, I don't know what he told me, but I had to repeat it about, I said, what was that again?
Can't you just be said, or George?
Willis.
He's a good Willis, I'm glad he's back on our board.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of those are yours, yeah.
Keep signing them, Jake, keep signing them.
May I have better.
These are the good ones here.
Jay, where do you guys get your reflective tape at? Nice to hear you asking me that. They need some reflective tape on some backs of their trucks and stuff.
I can't answer that, 'cause we had a big box of them when I went up there. I'll find, I can find out.
I thought I said, well, check with CED, I don't know, do they do stuff like that?
Bet they do, I bet they got.
So, instead of me throwing magazines away, like for medical service supplier, whatever that place is called, I would.
We've got a ton of magazines up there too, from everywhere.
From my stuff.
Probably that, did that number company need it, where you guys are getting your numbers? That reflective tape?
I don't know where they're getting it.
They've got some good prices down there.
Flora must be picking that up.
It's an Ener, I know that.
They could have, they could have.
They were very helpful once they, we just left, we had it knocked out in like an hour and a half, they were gonna get numbers, and they'd gotten a warning from. Oh, and the sheriff said, he's going, you guys need a little, take a little reflective tape on the back of that tire truck. He says the big red and blue lights flashing on top don't help, and he says, whoa.
Yeah, yeah, she was asking me about getting a rescue unit certified. I said, well, do whatever you want to do, I'm not gonna tell you not to. You better ask the EMT there, and that paperwork.
Yeah.
See, A and B and Golder, you're only two that are certified to count you. That paperwork here is terrible. You don't have to do that, she said. Well, I told her I had to, and I said, no, you don't have to.
Jay's got one he missed.
I probably missed everything in the file, that was probably me.
You want me to sign this for you, Jay?
Go right here. It don't make any difference to me.
It's this one. Number one.
Number one, okay. Was that your fault?
I said it was probably my fault.
What's the date? One nine, ain't it?
Yes.
I'm gonna miss somebody's number one. My pen just ran out of here.
There'll be more of them.
And A and B's supper is Friday night?
Friday night, yeah. Will be in the paper this week.
It was in the paper last week.
Okay, I was pretty sure that.
So I assume it was in the paper last week, so.
Really, I think it's running again this week, with.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be a story. What are you raising money for? Everything?
We just, hell, we've had it, and.
Most specific things you're buying?
We just.
Reggie hair, so.
And we try to buy our gear and stuff like that, that you don't have to have with that piece, and I'm going now, out of that fund. I hope, we may not have it, probably not, the way the weather's rocking. We may not have any powder.
Well, they are talking, aren't they?
Oh, man. Well, I hope our generator out there.
Where is it?
Bottom, right, everybody's up there. We signed the top of the blankets, when we go through the blankets, and then.
You have to add extra, you see.
Okay. Any dates to you?
Please, or I can.
Days, one, the day's day.
No, seventeen.
Oh, wait, I need to be, I need to be signing these.
He remembered it, seeing that in counseling, he missed it, he remembered it.
How did I get into this deal? Well, I missed, did I miss one of them either?
No.
I don't think so.
Nope, not yet.
Oh, yeah, I guess, I guess. Now you got me, I'll do it then, or Kyle.
Yo, you guys will get a.
Hey, wait a minute, I was putting sixteen, that's all gotta be changed to seventeen.
Nope, you got seventeen on this one, seventeen on that one, seventeen on that one.
Yeah, now jump back to sixteen.
You was doing good, you thought about it, but. Uh, nope, 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 nope.
No, no, no.
Yeah, only sign them with their bunches.
Yeah, that's, that's, oh, I see what you're changing.
Okay. Don't sign, get my name off of that one.
Yeah.
I didn't support the net outfit.
It's so wide out, it's need by some.
Me, I, with the secretary.
That's right, I got a deal going with her.
Yeah, we know who wears the pants enough.
That's right.
I will to call and tell them to know that you, that you did run up the stairs.
When they say better half in my deal, they mean it.
She is a good Katie.
Well, I don't wish it was tensioned, then.
What, all rock? Somebody use Guffy? Somebody use Crane?
Uh-huh.
Who else? For ten ninety-nine, so I'll make sure I know everybody. Two W's, Jim and Johnny?
We're dogging me on a Guffy deal.
What, blankets do you guys use?
Yeah, I think, Chris.
Chris, that's what I was gonna say. Okay. Any of you guys use any, um, buddy outside? I'm not talking bridge inspector, like, or bridge guy, to do any welding or any services for you guys?
I, um.
Deeds.
Outside of them.
Yeah, yeah, well, deeds, yeah. Yeah, I'm sound, but, I don't know.
At the background, just, just a few.
This blanket.
Huh?
There, you guys will sign that one.
West County Sheriff blanket.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, my, um, I'm excited for him. I've got a new company coming to CS on our land records. I know we're supposed to have a meeting luncheon today. It's who Woods County uses now. They canceled their luncheon, so I wonder when they're gonna get back together.
Didn't have anybody to work.
It was Tyler Technology.
Nobody else want to come?
I'll have to do lots of persuading before I change, just because I know it's gonna be a headache on my part. It'll show, we got price time, but.
That's all we have for?
Did we get any group?
Do I watch you some?
We need road crossing permits. We will get one. The guys, if they're going down the guys, if you take, like, road crossing.
They're square.
Yeah, they only had to take two quick shots and let them do it all.
And it all, sometimes it would be in green, sometimes it would be in blue, sometimes it could be red.
Guys, if you set watch that. Pipe up a little oil flow and everything else, and have TVs on there, but it gotta be under twenty-four seven.
That's yours.
The blanket, knowledge, dirty do.
Daniel, it's.
Yeah, but anyhow, it's gonna have somebody come and talk to.
It sure makes a difference.
You're gonna watch, you know, that oil flow, that, hell, if something happens, that.
John and Chad already figured it.
In just a few minutes, we're gonna do the blanket purchase orders.
Great.
You guys sign up here in the meeting, when we do blanket purchase orders, and then you, this is basically to keep you from having to do a PO every time you go there, or you can just do it all on one.
Every truckload of rock.
Yeah, every truckload of rock, or every trip you go to, um, O'Reilly's, or Napa.
Or whatever. Or the co-op, or whatever, if you.
Over yours, you got it.
They would drown us in paperwork, I don't need a.
Major County has just went to, I don't know, that's just one of their districts, has went to blankets on everything. So then they don't have to do requisition forms.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Travis did that, or Rolla did that, or?
Uh, no, yeah, Rolla did, yeah, Travis did. No, whereas I know that's 'cause I have a brother that works for that district, and he says that they went with blankets on everything, and then they don't have to do a requisition form on, they just have to do a, do a position form for your blanket. You don't have to do any other ones, and then they just gather them for the whole month, and.
A moon's week, yeah.
Moon, second, all favor?
Ah.
Now we're to blankets, right?
Now you're on blankets. This is two. Sure.
Two, one.
Two, one, share. Blank sign, share.
We just have to make, you know, another.
Okay, these are tapes.
Yeah.
Sign up, sign up at the top. This is a, this is an empty blanket, so we have to make.
I got you.
Knowledge of the blankets.
I got you.
Different four.
One, two, and four?
Sheriff, one, two, and four.
Got it.
Makes perfect sense for me.
Make a motion to approve?
I might. Oh, well, I'll just say aye then.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, no road crossing permits? Monthly officer report?
I'd like some more.
We did monthly highway expenditures last week.
Sorry.
Did that one off?
That's all right, I'm good.
Yeah.
We sign this anywhere?
Uh, open it up, I think it's a little spot.
It's on the back side, I remember now. Sorry.
Didn't have a other place for left-handed.
Uh, yeah, well, he was that courthouse improvement deal in years, haven't they?
I'm not sliding here.
Chips deal, they ever done again here?
It may have been something.
Move the wall outside, yes. I make a motion to approve?
Take it.
Home favorite?
Yeah.
We have no highway expenditures, right?
And we did that last, last week.
Yeah.
Hello? How do you make your phone call?
You can push the red buttons, I guess.
So red button's the stop? Hey, Kelsey, can I ask you a question first, real quick?
Thank you.
Um, okay, I need to know who she wants to be the receiving officers and requisition officers pretty quick, 'cause we're to that part in the meeting, and I didn't grab her this morning. And requisition officers? All right, thank you.
We just need to take those all to Alvin, all, yeah. Yeah, we didn't ask her about that this morning, did we?
I didn't.
We got done too much talking.
We didn't.
Did you go to the big capital?
Don't wanna talk about it.
Okay.
Boys got their first loss of the season.
Yeah, but who was it playing?
Kingfisher.
Kingfisher good, right?
They always beat us in the finals at the capital.
Really?
I'm losing.
Last three years.
All favor?
Aye.
Skip that one.
Yeah?
So she called back.
For number three, for how old, six-month bid?
I missed asphalt supply on the six-month bid. I called the auditor's office to see what we needed to do. She said, you guys can basically do one of three things. We can just, I'll write a letter explaining, I just missed it. We're so sorry, we're going to leave it like it is, which was coastal.
Coastal, yes.
They are lower than coastal. She said we can go ahead and open it back up, and you guys can approve it again, we send letters to both. Or we can just completely go back out on bid for it again. I did check with Chad to see if you guys had any projects in, I'd called him a couple of years, and didn't get a response, I called the offices. And everybody was gone. So, do you guys have chip and seal projects that are gonna be coming up in the next six months? I know it's kind of hard to project.
I know. Building one of them, well, see, first one's cheaper, the next one's higher.
Yep.
I probably not.
Again, if they're on the majority of their things, if they are cheaper on the majority of them, we can send that back to them, that coastal was low bid on the majority of the items that are used. But if that is you guys' call, you tell me how we want to do it.
Or is that him?
They had, they had it for the past, I know the last six months they had it.
Wait, MC three thousand, what are you doing?
Doing what?
You say MC?
MC three.
MC three thousand?
Or, then there should be an eight hundred on there.
Eight hundred, there, coastal's a dollar ninety-eight, and there a dollar eighty-four. MC three thousand for cheap, or chip and seal, there a dollar eighty-one, coastal's a dollar eighty. That's if you're putting a rock on.
That's all delivered price, correct? That's all delivered price, correct?
At the very top of the form.
I know it. You don't say this, you know, it's a thermatics down here.
Depending on whether some of it's delivered, some of it didn't.
Right, well, it should be, it's gotta all be delivered.
It's all gonna be delivered, we don't have the.
Yeah, we don't have.
Well, maybe, some of them.
Well, it says it down there, it's what your momma does. I just think we could just leave the saints, my, we were rad, 'cause.
That, and then you guys' call. I mean, I don't mind owning up to it, it was me, I.
I wonder why you had that on, I'm sure whoever did that, I'm saying.
I just missed them, they called me, I'm like, um, sir, we sent those acknowledgement letters out, and he's like, oh, man, I missed it, and I'm like, hold, wait a minute, I could've missed it, and I didn't.
Has anybody got armor code, chip and seal?
I haven't got anything in six months.
Yeah, you don't, no, you haven't got chip and seal, you're all yours. Blacktop lucky.
I don't think I'm going to, not that I can think of, but whatever, something comes up.
Well, we still have it.
Well, you still have coastal.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Approved on there, and I said, I don't own up to it, I'll just tell them I missed it. You guys chose not to open it back up.
To me.
That's what I'd say.
Did a motion and a second on them.
You making a motion, Jay?
Yeah.
A second, okay, stand a second. All in favor?
All right.
Call you, I can't reach you down. Huh?
It's gonna fall.
Uh, yeah, all right.
Can you guys assign a second resolution, that way I can send them an original, I'm sorry.
Yes. We can do these private properties, let's save time, can't we?
Oh, there she is. I meant to tell you, I asked you that in the earlier meeting, and I did not, so I need a requisitioning officer and a receiving officer for you, so we can, because right now, nobody can put POs on for you, because you don't have one.
So, do you just give one to each deputy?
Uh, we have two on each, they can't, both, I give your receiving officer and Lisa's a receiving officer, neither one of you can be on the other list. So, you do it how you want to do it.
How did Lori have us, do you remember?
Lori had requisitioning as herself, and then receiving as, I think you and Lisa on there.
Then I guess mimic, mimic that.
So, you want Tammy as requisitioning? And Lisa and Kelsey receiving.
Yes.
Thank you, sorry to make you walk all the way down there.
Yeah, you're supposed to keep one for your, in your files, and get one to landowner. Landowner's never one of them, but. I forgot, well, somebody to do, wanna take these trees out, especially at the mountain, where the needle lives. Those trees have been there forever. I make, approve both of them.
A second.
All in favor?
Do you know when your landowner signed this?
Huh?
Do we know when the landowner signed this?
Which one?
On the northwest quarter of W five, twenty-five ten.
Logan.
I can't read it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Looks like an L.
I don't know when he signed it, but that is after. Tell you, I didn't count the category. Read the other one, so we can figure out what that one is.
Yeah, okay, we're done, yeah.
What did we get him?
Not yet.
Yeah, we need to go back up.
That one's supposed to be Todd Wells, but if that's Todd Wells, you're. Now I go back up to requisition.
Yeah.
Receiving officer, Public County Court Clerk.
She requested herself as a requisitioning officer, and Lisa and Kelsey as her receiving officers.
Make a motion on that.
I'll move it, Captain.
All in favor?
All right.
Any thing else?
Move we go.
Second, all in favor?